Welcome, everybody, to the Hewitt, Texas City Council Regular Meeting tonight at 7:00 of April the 7th, 2025. At this time, I will open the meeting. All members of council are present and open the meeting at 7:00. Could please join me on.
A pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is the public hearing in awaited action. Item number two, is the public hearing impossible action on ordinance number 2025 dash eight, granting a request for a variance to the signed ordinance for a sign located at 311 Enterprise Boulevard as prescribed in Chapter 58 of the sign. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We've had a local business, sign company, wanting to place a sign for a new local business, Pusher Signs, has submitted a request for a variance to our sign ordinance. The property is located at 311 Enterprise Boulevard and is currently being developed as a discount tire. They request variance for a 30-foot-tall pylon sign with a facing of approximately 98 square feet. The developer asked them to be, to put up a single pylon sign instead of the permitted monument sign for the development. They're requesting only a single sign to help keep the property's aesthetics from cluttering and help with the site handicap of being next to Interstate Highway 35. A map of the property along with the application is included in the backup material and the staff's recommending approval of this request. Mr. Mayor, members of council, in possession of your packets, you have the application of the sign variance, its location, the acreage of the zoning of the location, total square footage of all buildings and property, pylon sign next to built out fit for a discount tire at I-35 and Alitz Parkway. Sign does not conform to code based on right-of-way linear footage and building square footage relative to sign over all height and square footage. Sign is part of the customer's new building package. The code that we're talking about is a detached sign between 5,000 square feet and 20,000 square feet shall not be allowed over eight foot in height above right-of-way on average grade. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this has been reviewed by staff. It does not create any site difficulties and actually will help with visibility for the local business. With that, it is ordinance number 2025 dash 08, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hewitt, Texas, granting a variance to Section 58-dash-7P sign requirements for non-residential uses of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hewitt, Texas, to allow for sign requested by development located at 1151 Enterprise Boulevard, Hewitt, Texas. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, happy to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Langford is also in the audience this evening if you have any further technical questions regarding the location.
Okay. At this time, we'll have a public hearing on the possible action of ordinance number 2025-08. I'll open the meeting and call for anybody that wishes to speak in favor or anybody that wishes to speak against. It is 7:04. And call the public hearing on ordinance number 2020-2025-08 is open. And I'll call for anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the ordinance. Second call for anybody that wishes to speak in favor. And third call for anybody that wishes to speak in favor. At this time, a public hearing is open for anybody that wishes to speak against the ordinance.
I'm sorry. I'm four. I'm with Pusher Signs and Lighting. I'm the one that filed for the variance.
So you're speaking in favor.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. So it's just to keep in line with the rest of the area there for visibility off of the highway.
I'm glad they're here and thank you for what you're doing. Thank you very much. Again, I'll call for anybody that wishes to speak against the ordinance. Second call for anybody that wishes to speak against. And third and final for anybody that wishes to speak against the ordinance. Hearing done. The public hearing on the ordinance 2025-08 is closed at 7:09. Sorry, guys, there's a bad reflection going on. All right. At this time, the council will discuss your questions regarding the ordinance and a movement to a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Potter.
I move to approve ordinance 2025 dash 08, granting a variance to the signed ordinance for traffic located at 311 Enterprise Boulevard for a 30-foot tall pylon sign as presented.
Thank you. We have the motion, Mr. Potter. Call for a second, please. Second. Turner. We have the motion from Mr. Potter and second from Mr. Turner. At this time, I'll hold the council for your vote. All in favor, please show your hands. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next up are the public comments. The City Council invites citizens to speak on any topic not already scheduled for a public hearing. The Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the council from discussing, responding to, or acting on any comments or items not posted on the agenda. Citizens that wish to speak must complete a public comment form and present it to the City Secretary before the meeting. Do we have anybody?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Next item number three is the approval of the minutes for the March 17th, 2025 City Council workshop in the regular meeting. This time, I'll open the council for any corrections and a movement to a motion, please.
Mayor.
Mr. McCallie.
I move to approve of the minutes as presented but to allow for corrections.
Thank you. We have the motion from Mr. McCallie. Call for a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Stevens. We have the motion from Mr. McCallie and second from Mr. Stevens. This time, hold the council for your vote. All in favor, show your hands, please. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next item number four, Mr. Miles Whitney, presenting pending utility projects, street projects, and drainage projects. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. You should have my written report, but starting with the utility projects, we got Commerce Park, the well. As stated in prior meetings, that project is still on hold, waiting for the plant contractor to progress enough for them to bring them back in. But in discussions with them last week, towards the beginning of last week, they may be able to be back on site sometime mid-May to install that well, pump and motor itself, and then begin the pump testing to get that thing approved for potable use with TCQ. On the plant portion of the project, TTE is out there working. They have the hole excavated to put the pump cans in. We've been kind of going back and forth, or Walker Partners has been going back and forth with them on the steps to be taken to set those cans. There's going to have to be broken into three pores, so we're just trying to make sure that through all three of those that the alignment is checked and agreed upon by the pump manufacturers so all warranties are valid. So it's typical stuff. It's just taking a little time to get to those steps. Lift station number four, discussions. Councilman Ben Calley, last meeting, you asked me about a timeline for that project. Kevin and I met with the pump supplier, or a potential pump supplier, about two weeks ago, going over that project to discuss the needs. He is working on getting a pump selection back to us to look at. That will in turn look at what equipment we'll be looking at utilizing at that facility. We're trying to make some modifications to the existing facility to pull this off to minimize some of those costs that we've talked about before. On the physical force main itself, had a meeting this morning going over some alignments with that. We're going to have to make some adjustments on the northern end of the project, especially where Waco's bringing in Gateway, their extension to 35. We only have some schematics right now. They're kind of in the very beginning process of that design, so I'll be working to firm up some of those timelines for you as we get those numbers in. Streets and Transportation Project, East Wall, Briarfield, that project contract documents are being executed. They are working on their traffic control plans. And once we have those traffic control plans, the city and myself will go over those, and then that's when we'll set the meeting date for the town hall meeting for those residents who'll be thinking about this. And that'll give them the opportunity to ask any, ask questions about the impact for their particular homes, and we'll discuss parking and stuff of that nature during different phases of the project. With that, that's my written report. Are there any specific questions?
Again, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Item number five is the discussion of possible action regarding authorization of a contract for slurry seal services with Viking Construction for 176,257 and 27,600. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's that time of year again. You noticed through most of the winter months, Mr. Coleman's crews have been out crack sealing streets in the community in preparation of getting down as much slurry seal as they possibly can throughout the course of the year. We look towards our inter-local agreement, purchasing agreement that we have with the City of Grand Prairie and kind of piggyback off of the prices that they're able to get because of that cooperative purchasing agreement. And we would like to propose this evening that you allow us to slurry seal 13 streets throughout the city. In your packet, you'll find Viking Construction's quote, but then you'll also find a listing on page 20 of 58 in your packet of the streets that would be performed, this work on. It would be West Wall Street from First Street to West Chapman, Tifton Circle from West Wall Street to the cul-de-sac, Tifton Circle again in the cul-de-sac, Oxford Hill from Moss Hill to West Wall Street, Sage Wood Drive from Moss Hill to West Wall Street, Oakberry Drive, Moss Hill to West Wall Street, Brook Circle from West Chapman to the cul-de-sac, and then the cul-de-sac on Brook Circle, Rowan Oak Drive from West Chapman to the cul-de-sac, and then the cul-de-sac on Rowan Oak Drive, Moss Hill from West Wall Street to West Chapman, Brushy Creek Drive from Addaway to West Chapman, and then the cul-de-sac on Brushy Creek Drive, Crescent Drive from 232 Crescent Drive, which is just outside area that recently has had some rehabilitation work done to the cul-de-sac, and then also Crescent Drive cul-de-sac. West Chapman from First Street to a spot just past Moss Hill, Briar Leaf Circle from Longwood Circle to Longwood to the cul-de-sac, and then the cul-de-sac, half the cul-de-sac on Briar Leaf Circle, Stone Ridge from South Old Temple to the cul-de-sac, and then the cul-de-sac on Stone Ridge. Those would be the streets that would be under consideration for slurry seal work in this particular award, should you award it this year. If you remember, we did some differing items with our budget. We'd been sending back some money for, Lee's been sending back a little money into Street Reserve Fund. We want to utilize that Street Reserve Fund, about 135,000, and then in our existing budget in the Street Maintenance Fund this year, take the rest of the amount of money, about 41,257 dollars and 27 cents. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Open the council for any questions or comments.
So just one question. Is the Street Reserve Fund, does that exhaust that fund at 135,000?
It will, yes. It will exhaust it, but through the course of some of our, how we've built that Street Reserve Fund is through the course of some of our budgeting processes of putting money back and putting money back. We would continue to do so, but for other types of Street Reserve Funds, but this upcoming fiscal year, you will probably see the Street Maintenance Line item in the Street Department's budget go up substantially by at least 125,000 dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? At this time, I'll call for a movement to a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McCallie.
I move to approve to authorize a contract for slurry seal services for Viking Construction for 176,257 dollars and 27 cents.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. McCallie. Call for a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Potter. We have the motion from Mr. McCallie, second from Mr. Potter. This time, I'll hold the council for your vote, please. Show your hands for all those in favor. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next item number six is discussion of possible action on repairs to the rear bay doors at the fire station. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You'll remember at your March 3rd City Council meeting, we had brought a problem that we experienced with front bay doors at the fire department. And you authorized us to go in and make changes, fix the one door that fell, and then replace that door of the other doors with like-kind. And the question came up during the course of that particular presentation about the rear doors at the fire station and their condition and how they were functioning and those types of things. And so you asked us to go back and take a look at what would cost for us to go and basically make some upgrades to the existing bay doors mainly with their track and rollers. We went out and then received two quotes, one from Waco overhead door, the other one from Loop 340 overhead door, and then we got a no quote from Hewitt Garage Door. But Loop 340 overhead door could replace and upgrade the four bay doors, tracks and rollers for 14,298 dollars. You remember from the March 3rd meeting, that was an unbudgeted expense to take care of those front bay doors. This, too, is an unbudgeted expense, but we do have some remaining CO facility improvement money from 2022 that could be utilized to make this purchase, should you want us to do that. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, be happy to answer any questions you the council may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Thomas. Before moving to a motion, open the council for any questions or discussions, please.
Just one question. So what's the total then for the front doors and the back doors now? Is it around 50 something?
Total for the front and the back?
Right. What was, that we authorized last?
Twenty-four for the front door. Approximately 24 for the front door.
And an additional 14 for the back. Worth it.
I agree.
Would this exhaust the CO we're paying for completely?
No, sir.
And just to clarify, this just puts mainly three-inch track on the back doors, right?
Yes.
Just like the front?
The tracks and the rollers.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yeah, I'm good with that. Okay. At this point, I'll call for a motion, please.
Mr. Maxwell.
Mr. McCallie.
I move to authorize the City Manager to proceed with the repairs and upgrades on the fire station bay doors as presented for the amount of 14,298 dollars.
Thank you. We have the motion, Mr. McCallie. Call for a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Bruce. We have the motion, Mr. McCallie, second quote, and Dr. Bruce. This time, I'll call for a look for a, hold the council, all in favor, show your hands, please. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next item number seven is discussion of possible action on awarding bid for capping Old Marina well to Jurgensen Pump in the amount of 59,250 dollars. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I may remember back in February of 2023, the council approved an inter-local agreement with the City of Waco, which authorized the exchange of real property to transfer the historical use pumping permit of the Webo Plant 3 well site, also known as Chapel Road, to the City of Hewitt. In exchange, we agreed to dispose of our Marina site to them and cap the well at the Old Marina plant. Well, we didn't, hadn't budgeted this because we wanted to wait until there was some coordination and the City of Waco was ready for this to occur and those types of things. So now they've come to us and they're, they're ready for us to cap that well. And so Kevin went out and sought written proposals from three different vendors that the most responsive proposal we got was from Jurgensen Pump in the amount of 59,250 dollars to cap the well. We had two other proposals that were, one competitive and one that was substantially higher. So we come to you this evening asking for authorization to make this unbudgeted expenditure. And I kind of need to talk to you about how we're doing this because we've kind of proposed a couple of things here that can occur. One, assuming everything goes the way everything is proposed to go, we receive all the revenue that we're not receiving in the utility, and we expend all the money in the utility in terms of its budget. We would need to spend unrestricted monies potentially to cap this well in the utility. Well, that's assuming all those things come true. We have a line item in the budget for the utility that can take care of this, but that's not necessarily what our intentions were at the time the budget was brought to you. Or we have some remaining CO monies left in 2024 issue for the utility in an amount of 52,583 dollars, and we are still anticipating some interest earnings on those remaining CO funds that could also pay for this as well. So I just put this out there for you in two different fashions, but the thing I didn't want you to not know and or understand was the fact that we didn't put this in the budget this year, but we can get it handled however you think we should get it handled. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you both. Open the council for questions or comments, please.
Is, is the primary difference for the estimates because Jurgensen is located just real close so not having to really bring a bunch of people in? I mean, those are, that's a significant difference.
Well, I would tell you, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Turner, that probably the biggest difference between Jurgensen and the next low proposer is the fact that we do a lot of business with Jurgensen Pump. And they kind of know us and know what we have, what we don't have, and a lot of those types of things. The highest proposer there, I'm not sure that they wanted the job.
That's clear.
Yeah. Cool. All right. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you.
So just one more question. So I, so what's the benefit of using the capital projects over the utilities or vice versa?
There's really not one distinct advantage versus another. They're both acceptable uses of the funds. And again, if, if we just pay for it out of our existing line item this fiscal year, by the time we get to the end of the fiscal year, the CO funds might not need to be utilized, nor unrestricted funds might be utilized.
Basically, you just need our approval to do something that wasn't budgeted.
Yes, sir.
The decision is the restrictions on the CO funds, it's a utility expense.
Correct.
So later on, if we didn't use the CO funds and we had a utility expense, we could still use that 52,000 some odd first utility expense.
Assuming that it's an appropriate expense, I mean, in terms of, you know, remember, again, that's, that's CO money that's being paid for or paid back over 20 years. We probably don't want to buy pickup trucks with it.
Correct.
But, you know, that type of thing.
On the 2024, the CO, the 52,583, it's a 53,000 or so. If we went that direction, it'd be applied to the 59, then would the balance come out of the unrestricted fund?
It would come out of existing budget.
Existing budget. Okay. Is there any plus or minus to doing one or the other from an investment standpoint? I mean, enough to make a difference?
Not enough to make a difference.
Okay. Yes, sir.
If we use the CO money, then theoretically, the unrestricted fund balance would be higher, which could be used for the upcoming wastewater project?
Yes, sir.
And assume the CO money could also be used for the wastewater project?
As I'm sitting here, I, yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I believe so. I would certainly like to go back and read those covenants before I've gotten both feet nailed to the floor, but yes.
Given that for simplicity, I'd rather go with CO money because that would leave more money later on to apply to the wastewater project.
There's no question whether we can use that money for that.
Right. Correct.
So we might as well.
Yeah, there's no restrictions.
Unlike unrestricted.
Yes.
Wastewaters are coming.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Anything else, Mr. Thomas?
No, sir. Thank you.
Well, at this time, I'll open the council for any further discussion, comments, and a movement to a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McCallie.
I move to authorize the use of unrestricted utility funds to proceed with the capping of the well at the Old Marina plant.
Is that, is that your motion? Think about it. You're good. That's your motion versus the, versus the CO.
I'm sorry.
Okay. You're good.
Thank you for the correction. You're good. I move to authorize the use of the CO 2024 funds to proceed with the capping the well at the Old Marina plant, awarding the bid to Jurgensen LLC for 59,250 dollars.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. McCallie. Call for a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Potter. We have the motion from Mr. McCallie and a second from Mr. Potter. This time, I'll hold the council for your vote. All in favor, please show your hands. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item number eight is discussion and possible action on ordinance number 2025-09 establishing a 40 mile per hour speed limit on FM 2113 Spring Valley Road from FM 2063 Sun Valley Boulevard to FM 1695 Hewitt Boulevard. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is something that we've been kind of grappling with, with Tech Dot over. This is something that we've been kind of grappling with, with Tech Dot over the last several months, in particular with completion, pending completion of Spring Valley Boulevard reconstruction and so on. You'll have on your agenda tonight this item as well as the subsequent item that's coming right after that are both related to speed limits on Spring Valley. The first is to set the normal speed limit on Spring Valley between Sun Valley and Hewitt Drive at 40 miles an hour from its current 50 mile per hour posted speed. We think based upon the way the profile and the demographics of this roadway has changed over now several decades, with all the residential streets that have been built into it, it's just been something that's probably been overlooked for a period of time. Probably don't need 50 mile an hour speeds going through the community on that particular roadway. And we were recommending to you that you reduce that speed limit to 40 miles an hour. With that, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Before moving to a motion, open the council for questions or comments, please.
I will say that with the widening of the road, though there aren't sidewalks all the way up and down, they're only present in certain areas, with the widening of the road and increase of the shoulders, you do see more pedestrian traffic on it, myself included, at certain points. So it makes sense. When it was under construction, it was 45, wasn't it?
Yes, during construction, it was 45, yes.
I was just going to say, as the guy that lives right off that road, which most of us do, there's multiple streets that come into residential streets. They've come into that strip. And I didn't clock it, but I'm guessing you might save 15 seconds. I don't know, but it's just not, I think it's a good idea to have a lower speed limit, especially in that section, so. Just while I'm thinking with that sort of.
We have a grace period. I mean, asking for a friend, chief. Want to make sure that we give everybody enough time to adjust.
I think, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, I think that's why you got that patch tonight.
Very good.
I think that's your one opportunity there.
Okay, I'll make sure I put that in the dash there in the car or mine myself.
So we're gratefully employed as a support. When would this take effect, like tomorrow?
No.
I'm gonna need a minute.
Asking for a friend's friend.
Actually, when you adopt the ordinance, we still have to then send that to Tech Dot and they have to go through their process and it will require ordering new signs and that type of thing.
Well, they're at it. Can they go and replace the Flint Rock, Flint Lock sign?
That's already been ordered, yes.
All right, cool, thank you. So that's off topic, but I had to get that in there. Well, sounds like I need to leave him a minute earlier, not just tonight, but in general. Call and answer at this time, I'll open for a call for a motion, please. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Turner.
I move to approve ordinance number 202509, establishing a prima facis speed limit of 40 miles per hour from FM 2113 Spring Valley Road from FM 2063 Sun Valley Road to FM 1695 Hewitt Drive.
All right, we have a motion, Mr. Turner. Call for a second, please.
Second.
Respect that one. Pro Tem Dr. Bruce, we have a second. We have a motion, Mr. Turner, and a second from Pro Tem Dr. Bruce. At this time, I'll call the council for your vote. All those in favor, please. This time, six to zero. Motion carries. Thank you.
It makes it better when I see the sound.
All right. Next item number nine. Is discussion impossible action on ordinance number 202510, establishing a 30 miles per hour school zone on FM 2113 Spring Valley Road. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council. This is ordinance 2025-10. This is establishing a school zone speed limit very, in relationship to the posted, new posted speed limit for Spring Valley based just on your, on just this recent action. That school zone would start approximately 130 linear feet northeast of Tahoe Trail to approximately 149 linear feet northeast of Steamboat Circle along Spring Valley. I believe those distances are the same distances that exist as the current school zone, but it would just change that speed limit to 30 miles an hour during those specified times. With that, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Before moving to a motion, open the council for any other questions or comments, please. At this time, I'll call for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McCallie.
I move to approve ordinance 2025-10, establishing a 30 mile an hour school zone from approximately 130 linear feet northeast of Tahoe Trail to approximately 149 linear feet northeast of Steamboat Circle along FM 2113 Spring Valley Road.
Thank you. We have a motion, Mr. McCallie. Call for a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Stevens. We have a motion from Mr. McCallie and a second from Mr. Stevens. This time, I'll call the council, all in favor, short hands, please. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next item number 10. Is discussion impossible action on resolution number 2025-01, authorizing the police chief to submit a grant application for Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority Task Force Grant Program. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council. In your workshop earlier this evening, Chief McGrath presented and proposed to you an item regarding flock cameras and possibly purchasing those and strategically placing them throughout the community here in Hewitt. Be 19 of them, two of which would be one located in Hewitt Park and one located in Warren Park. There is a grant program, as the chief mentioned earlier this evening, through the Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority, and it's a task force grant. It's an 80/20 grant. So if funded by way of grant, the total amount of our request would be 78,750 dollars. Would knock that complete purchase and only make our 20% match, that we would have to pay 15,750 dollars. We are required as part of the grant application process to receive a resolution from the governing body prior to making that submission. And we just got somewhat lucky with the timing because the deadline, I believe, for this application to be submitted is April 18th. With that, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Before moving to a motion, open the council for any questions or discussion, please.
I see that it's submitted at a tamu.edu address. It's got to be great.
Did you have a response, Mr. Thomas? All right. I guess with that, there's no other discussion? At this time, I'll call for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Potter.
I move to approve a resolution number 2025-10, authorizing the chief to submit a grant application from the Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority Task Force Grant Program.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, Mr. Potter. Call for a second, please. We have the motion, Mr. Potter, and a second from Mr. Turner. This time, I'll call the council, all in favor, please, short hands. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next item number 11. Is discussion impossible action to approve the extension of a gas line to the new fire station? Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council. I previously awarded a bid back in December for the construction of the new fire station. At the time that that bid was brought to you, we had planned to move forward with gas, but could not make it a part of that bid at the time that we were going out to bid because Atmos could not hold prices as long as it took for all those things to be coordinated and get that bid in, get it awarded and those types of things. So we're coming to you this evening to get authorization from you to extend a gas line to the new fire station and it provides service to that new fire station. And the cost that we would have to basically directly pay to Atmos for performing the work would be 63,176 dollars. With that, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Before moving to a motion, open the council for any questions or comments, please. Hearing none, at this time, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Stevens.
I move to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Atmos Energy to extend a gas line to the fire station project along Temple.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, Mr. Stevens. Call for a second, please.
Second.
Pro Tem Dr. Bruce. We have a motion from Mr. Stevens and a second from Pro Tem Dr. Bruce. This time, I'll call the council for your vote. All in favor, short hands, please. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. We have adjourned, aren't we? It's the end of the yellow beret. Any further? Number 12 is a briefing and discussion concerning the city of Hewitt strategic plan 2025-2030 continued if needed.
Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, I have nothing this evening. They just place us on the agenda depending upon how long we went and if you needed more time. That's the only reason why.
Any questions in this area at this time? Okay, well, at this time, for the workshop, excuse me, the regular meeting attendant, call for a motion, a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Bruce. This time, the meeting is adjourned at 7:40. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, unanimous. Thank you. 7:43 meeting.